I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. Today's Wednesday, September 12th, 2018. The time is 7:03. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
Approval of the agenda. I know the Charter says a couple of changes.
We do. We need to add, under new business, we're going to make it Item 10A. That's going to be appointment of prosecution counsel.
Prosecution counsel.
And just a typographical change under Item 10G, which would be 10H. All items are moved on accordingly. Under Item G, number seven in Roman numerals, Fund 295 should be building permit fund. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Public comment on items not on the agenda. State your name and...
How are you doing today? Jeff Puzey, 2551 Bull Run. Hello, Mr. Ferrari. Hello, Mr. Phil Dunn. I'm here with people of our subdivision. I'm trying to get the association together for LPU subdivision. And things came up with a barn possibly entering the driveway into Bull Run off of Baldwin. And I've been going back and forth with Mr. Ferrari. And I think that everybody just wants to hear what exactly is going on with it. I've discussed with them briefly, but I think it's always good to hear from, straight from you guys.
Unfortunately, this is public comment on items and we're not going to go back and forth. I will tell you, we are working on it. We do have, or Joe, I'm not going to say we, Joe has a plan to take care of that problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're good. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Let's move on to the second reading zoning ordinance 67A point 017. Amendment aye. Any questions? How about with two? Two ayes. How about with three ayes? Would there be a motion?
I move to approve the following amendments. One, amend Section 18.2 amendment procedure. Two, amend Article 2 definitions. And three, addition of new Section 6.26 Solar Energy Systems to the Charter Township of Oxford zoning ordinance 67A as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll do it with Margie.
Yes.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Fire Department. Anything, Chief?
We'll talk about it later.
Okay. Onto budget workshop meeting. Reschedule meeting date. Curtis, I'm going to leave this one up to you.
Okay. What happened here is that at our last meeting last month, we set the meeting date for the 19th of September. Unfortunately, based upon publication of getting the items in the paper, that date will not work. So now we are back to the originally scheduled date of September 26th. I know that some board members are going to be out of town. So it's a matter of deciding whether or not to hold it on September 26th, the special meeting, or pick an alternate date. So it's open for discussion, Board, on what date would be available to get a quorum of the board to approve budgets.
We kind of went over this today, and there was kind of a consensus to hopefully have it on the 26th at 7 o'clock. But we do need...
Four commitments.
We need at least four commitments.
I will not be...
I will not be there.
I will not be here.
So that's three. The other four have to be here or...
I can't be here either.
How about the 28th? Yeah, it's a Friday.
28th would work for me.
Can you 28th work for you?
Or the 27th.
It's a Friday.
27th, no. I'm coming back the 28th.
I think the 28th should work for me. Yes.
Curtis?
At 7:00.
Amen.
Jack?
7 o'clock on a Friday night?
Well, it'll give me time to get back.
I'll buy you a drink when I get back.
Yeah, Bill, what do you mean? Don't think about buying you drinks.
Yeah, I'm available.
I move to rescind the special meeting date approved at the August 8th, 2018 Charter Township of Oxford Board Trustees Regular Meeting. The scheduled Charter Township of Oxford Board Trustees Special Meeting for 7:00 PM Friday, September 28th, 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Is Jack going to like the Friday night?
Okay, Jack. You better. See you guys. Okay, let's move on to new business. We had something come up with the prosecution. Did everybody get my note today? Could I have my email so I can, I need to just read it out loud. Yep, it's got it.
That's the cover letter.
I'm just going to, I'm going to just read it. "The Township's prosecuting attorney, Dan Kelly and Ralph Macaron, have submitted the resignation to the firm of something Mullins and Horton. Mr. Kelly has served Oxford Township prosecutor for the past four and a half years. Mr. Kelly and Mr. Macaron will continue to do municipal law through the firm of Kelly Firm, PLC. The Township's current contract with prosecution service with GMH can be terminated upon written notice. It is my recommendation the Township provide the notice of the termination of its relationship with Gr. Marco Mullins and Horton and retain the firm, Kelly Firm, PLC for the Township's prosecution services." I would like to, first of all, tell you that I can't really recommend them because I, in reality, I don't deal with prosecutions. It's up to the Sheriff's Department. But I have invited our Substation Commander, Lieutenant Patterson, here to comment on whether they're doing a good job, or should we fire them, or...
Our relationship with them has been excellent. I've got nothing but, you know, rave reviews from my staff and the guys and the gals of dealing with them throughout all these years. It's, I'm very happy with them. I've never been happier with anybody but these guys so far in all the time I've been out here. So I would highly recommend it.
Okay, that's what I need to hear.
And I contacted Gr. Marco today and laid it on the phone, said that they're okay with it too. I didn't, wouldn't think that would be acceptable to them. I mean, losing a client to a now competing law firm, but I guess everything's going smooth.
You know, also in the email I sent you, if you look in there, it has the Gr. Marco, it has their contract. And in that contract, there were some changes. And so that was inserted their name and the dates and all that. Everything's going to be the same as far as monetarily. If everybody understands that, I'm going to move to terminate the legal services contract with Gr. Marco Mullins and Horton and retain the Kelly Firm, PLC, for prosecution services of the township. And authorize the township supervisor to provide notice and confirm all matters necessary to timely effectuate the transition of legal representation on behalf of the township under the same existing terms and conditions.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Yes.
Just curiosity, on the signing of this contract, considering it's approved, how will the billing take place? Will it be appropriated from Gr. Marco and from Kelly Firm? Or will, are we locked in to the end of the month with Gr. Marco?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Kelly, who happens to be in the audience, Dan Kelly.
That's a tough one, Bill.
Good evening, everyone. And I...
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan Kelly. Thank you. It's been very smooth with the law firms. So they're agreeable to any time to make a switch, assuming that the board is inclined to do that. I would assume it would be on the 15th of the month, which is how the bills have been billed at this time. So...
I'm sure you're always going to have a transition, though. We're going to have some cases that are transitioning. And you might have to give bill for one transition to the other.
Yeah. For the prosecution, you pay a flat rate. So it's even easier when you're doing that.
It's $2,500 a month?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, that's right.
And there is no transition. It's not like we're changing lawyers and you've got certain cases going, something, or finishing up and having that transition. It's not...
Yeah, Mr. Macaron handles all of the cases, primarily in the prosecution and the district court. And so he'll continue to handle them. It's the same schedule. It's just simply a name change in the firm.
So it won't be double billed?
Oh, no. Absolutely not. Yeah. And I'll make sure with the billing department that they understand this is Gr. Marco's last bill. This would be our next bill. I'll make sure that's clear.
Soon as Bill gets the letter.
Do, well, we have the letter. I have one that, I'll take care of it. As long as the motion goes through, to have me take care of the paperwork.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Hmm. Yes.
Thank you.
I owe you that, dude.
Thanks for your support.
Not a problem.
Appreciate that.
Take care. Okay, on to Riverwalk subdivision request to contact, to connect to Township Water. This is under the Water Sewer Committee. Do you want to handle this, Jack, or do we want to...
Sure, I can handle it. Board, what happened in your packet? The Riverwalk subdivision located off Drainer Road. 14 of the homes were on a Class 3 well, community well. The well failed. The township emergency hookup went okay. And they have a temporary service. While we worked through all of our ordinances and variances and situations going on, we have the homeowners agreement to hook up to the water and pay the water system tap fee of $6,075, plus the emergency hookup and everything. Everything went well. But we have to bring this in front of the board to approve this request to connect because what we're going to do with the second is we're going to ask for a variance. So we have to first approve it, and then we ask for the variance.
Joe, or someone have a motion to first approve it?
Yeah, let me try to make one up here.
I got one. It's, it's a big one.
Go ahead, Jack.
I move to approve a variance as permitted by Chapter 62, Article 2 of the Oxford Charter Township of Code of Ordinances and recommend by the, and recommended by the Oxford Township Water and Sewer Committee to allow the homeowners of 14 lots in Riverwalk subdivision to connect to the Oxford Township water system. There are a list of variances, six of them, and I'm going to read them. Number one, the 14 lots in the Riverwalk subdivision have been connected to a Type 3 well, and this Type 3 well has failed, and it is no longer operational. Number two, the 14 lots in Riverwalk subdivision have been temporarily connected to the Oxford Township water system since its failure of the Type 3 well. Number three, the option to drill individual wells is not advocated due to the potential contaminants that could be present in the aquifer. Number four, the Oakland County Health Department and/or Michigan Department of Environmental Quality may not issue a permit to drill an individual well. Number five, the Oxford Township water system is available to service these Riverwalk subdivision homeowners on a permanent basis, and the Riverwalk subdivision declaration of restrictions in Section 26 states, in part, Lot 4 through 10 and 22 through 28 shall be required to connect to the township water and have their well abandoned in accordance with the Michigan Department of Health specifications as soon as township water is available. Number six, the Riverwalk subdivision homeowners do not qualify for installment payments as requested in an August 14th, 2018 correspondence to the Water and Sewer Committee based on the conditions required in Section 62 through 40, 62 dash 41G1 of the Oxford Charter Township of Code Ordinances. That's the end of that motion.
Moved.
Second.
Moved.
Second.
And seconded by, was it Joe? Did I hear you? Yes, moved by Joe Farrar.
Moved by Jack, seconded by me.
Okay, any questions? I'm going to do a roll call.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
I've got a question here. We've done the variance here, but have we done the part where we allow them to join the system?
This is joining the system.
This is the joining of the system?
Now, we're going to talk in the next page. The next item is, and if you want, I'll start.
Go ahead, right into it.
This is for Riverwalk subdivision payment of connection fees.
Paying that usage?
The Riverwalk subdivision residents affected by the failure of their well have inquired on options to pay for the water connections. And we have, in the Water and Sewer ordinance, the ability to ask for a variance for them to have, or the township board to allow installment payments if we so elect to do that. Now, we've worked through with these, these homeowners to get them water. They've got the water. They've agreed to hook up. But in these times, we just have a request that installment payments be requested, and we need the board approval. The motion is, I move that the properties located in the Riverwalk subdivision, being lots 4 through 10 and lots 22 through 28, as platted, affected by the Type 3 well failure, be allowed the option to make installment payments with a 20% initial minimum payment and up to four additional annual payments for the water connection fee and any accrued interest on the unpaid balance. A 5.30% interest rate shall be applied annually to the unpaid balances for the homeowners making installment payments. The first payment, whether it's paid in full or a 20% minimum payment, shall be due within 30 days after the permanent connection to the Oxford Township water system.
It's been moved and supported. We're going to do it by Mr. Nichols.
Question for you. The motion before that said they couldn't get it, and I'll say that they can.
Right. According to the ordinance?
They can't.
They can't. Unless you come to the township board and get approval to do so.
Override the...
Okay.
So the first motion was allowing, the first one that passed, allowed them to hook up to the infrastructure. Now, what we asked, what the residents asked for was a variance, which I just made the motion to approve. And if we get four votes, they can have installment payments.
Remember, this all happened at one time?
Yes.
Well, we've had several meetings with them.
Okay, because I'm just wondering, like, will people be coming in all at once, or is just each lot coming in?
They have 30 days.
They have 30 days to pay.
When the system failed, it all failed.
Okay, so, because I got to kind of get this stuff ready to go with.
They're all going to be coming in within 30 days.
Okay, okay.
Well, we have to hook them up. They're temporarily hooked up right now.
They have 30 days after they're hooked up.
Yeah. Jim, how long do you think it'll take? I'm sorry, Bill. Would you ask Jim how long it'll take? DeAngelo is on.
I think the motion passes, we'll reach out to the WRC tomorrow, and we'll tell them to coordinate with DeAngelo. Hopefully, he's on board to do the hookup in about a week.
Bill, can I ask you if that's good enough?
Joe asked me to ask you. Is that good enough?
What good?
Is what good enough?
Will that work? Will that timeframe?
Will that work?
It's going to have to work. The timeframe, is it aggressive, or is that a good timeframe to go with?
Tomorrow, next week?
They've been in a loop the whole time. They know that it's coming.
They know, they know everything about this.
Okay, good.
We've had several meetings.
And you had a question, Joe, on the usage. They're paying their usage from when we gave them the emergency connection till now. It's so much a day per person, or per household.
Okay.
Was it $4,000 a day for household?
200 gallons of water a day, sir.
200 gallons of water a day.
So I got to kind of let my staff know this is going to be happening.
Yes. Any other questions on this?
Just one point. With the, if there are installment payments that are, that are going to be made by the homeowners, is there some sort of agreement that needs to be signed?
Oh, yes.
In the township and...
Oh, yeah. Same as we've done it before to the other ones that have done it.
And that's in place that we don't have the motion?
Oh, yeah, it's a standard one.
Joe, Joe take through that.
Yeah, I take care of all that. Yep.
And what happens if they don't pay, Joe?
It goes in the tax bill.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
Hasn't happened yet.
I want to own Mark's house.
Okay. Where are we? Did we make a roll call?
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Well, welcome to the water system.
Hey, appreciate it. Appreciate all your help on this project. It's been very good work and the quality.
It's been a group effort, not only the township, but the, you know, the county.
Yeah. Honestly, I can't say enough, you know, I called you, Mr. Dunn, at 1:30, 2 o'clock. I had a meeting with...
Us at 5 o'clock.
3:30. I was here. We were talking about 3:45, Mr. Sharp. So we had to water our residents at 9:30 the next morning.
The next morning.
That's valuable. I, you know, I really, really appreciate it, not only from my own family, but for the rest of the community.
Okay, anything else, guys? Let's move on. Clear Lake, Special Assessment District, Clerk Wright?
This is the second SAD that we put in place in the township. It's coming up for renewal. It's a five-year SAD. It's expiring in 2018. So the process has to start all over again. So what we're going to do is present to you the first step in the process, which will be getting approval from the board to proceed with the SAD and authorizes the engineer to set the district boundaries and the estimated cost. What we're looking at, which was in your packet, here's, here's the map that was included in your packet. What's colored in in green is the homeowners that have signed the petition. The signatures have been verified through the voter registration signatures, as well as homeownership in the assessing records. So what we need to do to move forward is make a motion, and I'll do that, to move to authorize Sharp Engineering to determine the special assessment district boundary area and the cost estimate for the purpose of eradicating weeds in Squaw Lake and Clear Lake.
I support.
Moved and supported. Hopefully, it won't be over 1,500, right?
Uh...
Okay.
As of right now, it won't be.
Okay. Everybody get this?
Yes.
Roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Adoption of the 2019 STEP system. Who wants to jump on this one?
That would be me.
Okay, committee. Committee of Elgin and Patty Dur.
Okay, give me a moment here to...
We'll give you a moment.
Okay. Well, actually, I want a summary.
We're not doing...
Take your time.
This is a step.
Okay.
That's, we're doing this. This is where we're at, right here. Adoption of the STEP system and employee evaluation.
Okay. After review of the STEP system, Patty and I have come to a conclusion that maybe there are some things that need to be done to make adjustment. We're not advocating that we do that tonight, but we are suggesting that maybe a committee consisting of the elected officials, Bill Dunn, the treasurer, and clerk, maybe come forward with a proposal that might improve the STEP system.
Do we have a timeframe? So everybody's put under the gun here. Would you want it by next month?
I'd like to see this by next month, but...
Okay. I just want to put a timeframe on it. Yes.
I have a couple of questions. You know, I've been emailing with Joe. Joe sent me some very logical things to do with the STEP system. Patty, or, Margie and I did last year these assessments of the STEP system. They're, this is a 20-year-old piece of paper, and by raising it 3% isn't really what I would be looking to do. I really wish your hope or request that we put this through to our HR people and determine if this is still a valid, if it's still a credible way to pay our employees, to rate our employees. You know, we need to involve those people with this kind of thing. Rather than just raise the STEP process 3% to bring us up a little bit, that's like putting Band-Aid on something that's not going to get cured. This thing needs to be looked at in its entirety. For example, you're never going to hire someone in here for $29,000 in a year. I mean, it's, it's really tough. But yet, to cap somebody at $60,000 and like communities are paying them more, or we're even at the top, you're not working a STEP system properly. You know, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this because I think that just adding 3% to it doesn't do good. But a committee utilizing our HR firm to come up with a STEP system that's more current than this 20-year-old is, that would be my recommendation.
Margie?
I tend to agree with Jack. We had a lot of conversation about it last year. The other thing is, is I understand that these rates are commensurate with the MTA survey for salaries. However, I would, it'll be a lot more work, but I would look at the duties and functions that are actually performed by these, by these employees versus other communities. Because, you know, I know from experience, just because you have one person in this position in this community does not mean that they perform the same function that they do in another community. And, you know, are we, are we, you know, compensating our people enough to, to pay for that? So I think the whole thing needs to be looked at.
I'm going to chime in. I would be in favor of increasing the STEP system by 3%, the cost of living this year. But give us time to come up with a different system. You just can't do this overnight.
Right. This is not a one-month fix.
You should have been around during the, trying to go through with the policy for the employees. That's still ongoing. It was years and years. So to hold this up tonight, I wouldn't want to do that. I would, I would like to possibly increase the steps by the 3% recommended, and then vow to take a look at this and come up with some answers right away. Joe?
Well, I agree with parts of everybody, what they're saying. To me, the system itself is flawed right now. Everybody's got my email. I think we need to get rid of STEP 1, add in the STEP 9, then we're not under the gun to get this thing cared of in like a month. I think it would really help then. It'll hopefully give us maybe six months or so to really tackle it. And I agreed with Jack. I mean, $29,000 to start with, that's why I think STEP 1 is invalid.
Part-time.
Part-time.
$9,000, part-time.
But I'd like to make it more, more attractive. That's what my suggestion would be, to get rid of one and go to STEP 9. Just like the emails that I sent, nothing's going to be perfect. I think we're trying to chase, you know, a unicorn. It's just not going to happen.
Well, Joe, when, when you do that, what you're, what you're doing is going to be giving a bunch of people an 11% raise.
That's just a byproduct of it. I'm looking at the policy.
I don't care about whether it's byproduct. I'm not giving someone, at least I'm not going to vote for a 10 or 11% raise, period.
I'm just looking at the policy part of it.
That is obnoxious. Jack?
Bill, how about if we did this? What I hear now, and I just picked up on, is you want to raise this STEP process up 3% to cover the raises that we're giving this year.
Correct.
And in that case only. But I do agree with taking some of those steps out of there and adding steps down at the bottom, you know, eight, nine. But I don't want them by fault to jump 10, 15% in wages. So to move it up 3% for the 2019 pay period, and then with the promissory note that this will be revisited by our HR people in 2018 and 19 for our next year's move. You have a question, Don?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Didn't mean to disturb you.
I'm right-handed.
There, Mr. Chairman. But Patty and I have pretty much gone through this process and exercise, and we've spent a lot of time, you know, trying to adjust what to do with it. So, our, our suggestion is very similar to what Supervisor Dunn's, uh, suggestion is. Give them the 3% right now, and then I think have a committee put together of this group to put together a more detailed approach to this. And also, the HR is a good idea, I feel, too, and I actually contacted them, but I never followed up on it because I thought the 3% was a good idea at this point. It's something that, you're right, you're putting a Band-Aid on it right now, but we haven't solved the whole issue. Uh, we can spend more time and do solve the issue, uh, if we have the right people put together for next year. Is my opinion.
I'd be fair for the HR doing it if it was under their current retainer.
It is.
Not in addition to it.
Yeah.
It is.
This is going to be quite an undertaking. I can't see them saying, "We'll do all this under what you're paying us right now."
That's what they promised us.
And I think it's, I think that is worth exploring. At least that was in our opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
It's an undertaking.
Yeah, yeah, well, what's being said is, I agree with quite a bit of it, but the, this, this system is wearing out its welcome. It needs to change, but we need, we need something behind the numbers to justify while we're giving step and grade increases, and we don't have that here. Now, we need, we need a resolution for those that have hit, uh, grade 4 Step 9. They're just hitting the wall with no incentive to get any more than cost of living. So, granted that those positions are at the top of the scale and the MTA salary surveys, that, that's a given, but on the other hand, there's no incentive to, for them to try to get to another step because they've hit the peak. Can't move them anywhere else, as an example.
Agree.
We couldn't agree more.
Absolutely. That's how we felt, yeah, last year.
Yep.
Well, I'm going to take care of one thing. I'm going to move to increase the 2019 Step System by 3%.
You mean approve the 2019 Step System by using the multiplier 3.02% to create the Step, Step System effective of the first payroll fiscal year 2019 as presented and attach the spreadsheet as a appendix of the minutes?
Where'd you get the 3.02?
3.0.
Oh.
Which one do you want me to second?
The one that Bill meant to say.
Joe's.
I second Joe's motion.
The one Bill meant to say.
Why don't you re-say it, restate it, Joe?
To approve the 2019 Step System by using the multiplier 3.0% to increase the Step System effective for the first payroll in fiscal year 2019 as presented and attach the spreadsheet as a appendix of the minutes.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Roll call.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
No.
Trusty Dur?
Yes.
And Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Let's move on to the second one. God, this is fun every year.
Oh, we love it.
Gotta love it. Okay, uh, this is Employee Evaluations. Trusty Dur and Trusty Nichols.
Okay, are you ready for this?
Yes.
All right, you'll find in your packet information supporting what, uh, we're about to do. Employee Wage Review Committee, um, the process that we use was to, the committee reviewed over 1,000 community statistics provided by the Michigan Township Association website. I believe Jack Curtis and his partner last year did this as well. Uh, discovery, uh, we found that only three townships were close to Oxford Township's population, tax base, revenue and payroll stats. I'm sure they found the same thing. However, their pay scale did not completely match Oxford's, and two out of the three instances, Oxford paid more in both salary and benefits than the sample group that we looked at. The committee discovered Oxford Township Committee, their employees are in comparison well compensated. Due to performance, uh, several employees were moved to an upgrade, and you can see the summary for that. Performance reviews presented a case for all employees having a cost of living 2.9% pay increase. You know, we wouldn't have any objection of rounding that off to 3 point, you know, for accounting purposes.
2.0.
All elected officials, which includes Supervisor, Treasurer and Clerk, declined pay raises. Like all other staff and committee, uh, recommends, they received the 2.9% cost, or 3% in this case, cost of living increase. So, they shouldn't be exempt from it. Overall performance, supervisors were pleased with all the staff members working within their departments. Um, and it was pointed out that.
I'm not going.
All the employees went beyond, uh, the call, uh, every day in order to, uh, do the job for the residents. Committee concerns, the chart used to determine the employee grade and pay scale may be out of date, that's to say, minor, recommend a committee be formed to elect official, by the elected officials, to look for possible update or revisions to the scale. Also, Assistant Township Supervisor is an at-will employee, we found out, who is appointed by the sitting township supervisor. The job does not fall under the description employee within the employee handbook. The individual is at the highest grade at this time, and like all other employees, the committee recommends this person also receive the 3.0 cost of living increase. Um, with that, that's, that's our report, and you have a detailed, uh, report of people.
In looking through this, there was one employee, I'm not going to mention names, jumped up two steps.
Mm-huh.
That means another 11% increase. I'm going to be against that.
Well, guys, say why that was done. We did that in order to bring her in alignment with others that were pretty much doing the same job, and she was getting a whole lot less money and was here for a while.
Well, again, I'm.
To justify it.
I think 11% is not right. I'll be voting no for that reason.
Okay, I think from a moral standpoint, something that we need to do.
I think a 7% increase is more than sufficient.
Okay, let me try this.
We got a question.
Um, who is an Assistant Township Supervisor?
That would be the deputy.
The deputy supervisor?
Deputy.
Just making sure, because in the, in the book, you can have, uh, a township manager and/or an Assistant Township Supervisor.
Okay, let me try this.
SMS use of, uh, of the label, I think, when we.
We won't hold it against you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Just clearing it for the record.
I hear crickets.
Uh-oh.
The following step increase, I'll make a motion, the following step increases are to be granted effective of the first payroll of January 2019 as follows. Administrative Assistant to the Building Department goes from grade, uh, grade, uh, goes to grade 3 Step 5. Administrative Assistant to the Treasurer goes to grade 3 Step 2. Administrative Assistant to the Clerk goes from grade 3 to step, goes to grade 3 Step 5. Administrative and Executive Assistant Substation goes from grade, goes to grade 3 Step 6. Uh, deputies automatically get that. Uh, that's my motion.
I support.
It's been moved and supported.
Good, I can see.
So, everything on here, was it?
Just one step.
The four positions.
The four positions here on the top, and one went from 3, uh, grade 3 to 6.
6 instead of 7.
Okay. Does anybody understand? Roll call.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Trusty Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Dur?
No, he already voted.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
The deputies automatically get their wage because nothing moves. Uh, did you, did you evaluate that, Jim?
I did not. Him with 3%.
I'll make a motion, uh, the following, I'll make a motion to increase, uh, the following, to increase the ordinance enforcement officer effective of the first payroll of January 2019. I increase that rate, uh, it's a 2018, 1888 point, uh, $18.88 per hour, and add a 3% increase to that wage.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Could we round that off to 20 bucks?
Is that 3%?
I don't know.
It seems reasonable.
19, that's, uh, 57 cents more.
20. I amend my motion to remove the 3% and round it to flat $20 per hour.
I'll amend my support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Roll call.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
No.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Dur?
Yes.
And Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
I make a motion that to, that effective of the first payroll of January 2019, the elected offices of Supervisor, Treasurer and Clerk increase 3% from the approved wages of 2018.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Dur?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
See how painless that was?
I don't think I've got some more of that. Does this one? I will make a motion that effective of the first payroll of 2019, the following increases be granted. Recording Secretary, Township Trustee Fees, Black Commission ZBA, gravel inspection fees, border review, increase $5 from the current rate, uh, effective with that January payroll. So, like 130, 135, 120, 125, 100, 125, 115, 120.
Seconded.
So, you're going against what's on here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they never get a raise. Every year I ask for it, every year they vote no.
It's been moved and supported. Yes.
Did you get your reasoning for the gravel inspection committee?
I did.
Okay.
Uh, it was basically, these people generally work all day, and they lose a day's wages at work.
Adding $5 isn't insignificant.
It's also paid for by the gravel companies.
It's, it's not out of the general fund. Uh, it's been moved, supported. Roll call.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Trusty Dur?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Fire Department Wage Recommendations. Who wants to talk? Chief?
You're stuck with me.
It's all right.
Chief Schultz is in a conference this week, so sorry you're stuck with me. Board, you should have received a memo from the chief requesting a wage, wage increase for Joanne Edmonds, our financial manager. Did everyone get that?
Mm-huh.
I will read it to you. Uh, the recommendation is really to bring the wage the same as it would be for the previous financial manager had she stayed, and the justification is included in the memo. Uh, we, too, think that we should look at the job as overall and what she's doing. Why that salary for that position was reduced, probably had merit at the time, but, uh, we feel that, uh, with the work she's doing and the workload and, uh, what she's given to the department, that, uh, the right thing to do is put that wage salary back to what it was. And, uh, we're asking that you support us in, uh, that wage increase as noted.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Did this board receive her evaluation?
I cannot answer that.
Is it possible from now on that we could see it? Because that helps with the justification of how she's doing.
I have it with me, but I did not know you didn't.
But you know what I'm, what I'm saying, in order for this board to, I mean, we see all the other evaluations, and she is a township employee, I'd just like to see, see it, maybe not tonight, but from now on.
Can't argue that. Thought you had them.
Joe?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following wage incre, excuse me, the following wage increase to be granted to the Fire Department Finance Manager effective of the first payroll of January 2019 from $47,000, 001.88 to $50,291 per year.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. If I'm not mistaken, that is a, this is like a step increase, so it's about a 7% increase?
Around that range.
It puts her to about a grade 4 Step 7.
Yep. So, that, that position would have moved up and got an increase as well.
How much did you say?
Uh, $50,291.
Excuse me.
Yes.
How long has she been in this job?
Three years?
Four years.
Four years? Boy, time flies.
Here, Margie.
How long you been out, Margie?
Four years in January. Um, I would say that the job is closer to the deputies than it is to the administrative assistants at the township.
I would agree.
And, and I would like to see it move up, you know, the, the wage move up, um, if not, you know, maybe incrementally.
Over a couple of years?
Between this year and next year, and, you know, to get her up to where it belongs.
You know, I'm on a lot of committees, and, and when they talk about 15% raises and 20% raises for people, I keep telling them, there's no way I'm going over 7% and I'm, I'm going to vote that way because I want to be consistent.
Right. Well, this, uh, going with Joe's motion, you're, you're there.
I believe she, she does, you know, warrant, but it's just, I'd like to do it incrementally like you were suggesting. Consider it again next year.
I would have a tendency to go along with, uh, Margie, you know, do this incrementally?
I am, too.
Rather than a big old chunk?
Well, the, the $50,000 is a good start for the, for the incremental increase.
That, that seemed pretty substantial to me when I looked at it, but, uh, big jump. From $47,000 to $52, it's a $5,000 increase.
Well, let's see.
That's a 10 or 11%?
Seven.
Yeah, 11.
47, 001.
001, let me figure this out.
And we just got through battling, a struggle, you know, for the local staff here.
It's consistent with what we've already done.
You know, uh. That's a 7% increase, I'm sorry. That's 7%.[1607.23] That's a 7% increase. I'm sorry. That's 7%.
The one we just did.
The $50,000.
Yeah, we knew that.
Oh, okay.
We knew that.
This is about what everybody else got with the step system. Four going up a step, and 3% co-op.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, just, my concern is that when I compare this on the current grade and step system, this is an example where this employee here has the ability to increase, where other people on that do not have the ability to increase, and if you're gonna work. I like the reason, the information provided based upon, okay, this employee is recommended to go this wage based upon they've done this, this, and this, which gives us some more indication of, yeah, you deserve this increase, whereas it doesn't matter for the other employees on that grade and step that's hitting the peak of the...
The ceiling?
The ceiling.
The ceiling.
So, so that's something that, hopefully going forward, that'll be...
Hopefully, we're gonna remedy that.
Hopefully.
For the three of us.
But, you know, there, again, I guess it depends on how you look at this. We've given some people only a 3% increase where this is gonna be up to seven.
I would remind you, though, she's not a township employee.
I know that. Yeah, I know.
Okay.
But they're kinda tied into us wage-wise.
I understand that.
And even, even the ones that are in the union.
Right.
They're kinda tied to us.
Yeah, I think there should be some consistency, but again, I think the merit in reducing that salary to what her starting level was, I think should be in question, and that's why we're asking for it. It is a substantial pay increase, there's no doubt about it. But I'll have to agree with trustee Payne that this position is an upper management position for our department.
I agree. Would she be a lieutenant?
I'm thinking she could be like assistant chief of...
7% is most loved.
Uh, roll call. Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, onto the fun stuff, the budget. Okay, folks, we're gonna, we're gonna do it quickly, hopefully. Start with the general fund. Is there any...
Oh, fires first.
Fires first?
That's all.
Okay. Okay, fire department. Is there any questions on the revenue portion of this? If not, we'll move forward.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the allocation from fund balance for 2019, 2021, what is the big expense that's coming forward that's not within the budget?
Good evening. Uh, yeah, the allocation from fund balance principally is because of an increase in the HRA budget for 2019. In previous years, every employee that has the benefit of the HRA, there was a maximum amount of $12,700, which we had always budgeted slightly less than, well, significantly less than that, but we've discovered that the HRA is, is being used more, and so we need to include that in this year, and that's where that extra allocation from fund balance is.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is that all on the revenue portion? Let's move on to the, the expense portion of the fire department budget. Any questions on this? Would there be a motion?
I don't think, I think we wait right, Dana, till the end.
No motion?
This is the workshop.
Oh, this is, okay, this is the workshop. Moving on.
Do a motion.
Which one's, uh, general fund is next. Let's move on to the, uh, revenue portion. Is there any questions on the revenue?
I made one change. Uh, the very bottom, 962.010, miscellaneous squaw lake, clear lake SAD, we have a number of $14,125 to go in there.
Okay. Not 16?
No. It's 14, 125, because we sort of have the new numbers.
Perfect.
Any other questions on the revenue portion? Let's move on to township board. Any questions on the township board? Supervisor's office, elections, accounting services, assessor, legal fees, clerk, border review, treasurer.
Oh, I have one question on border review. When you did the wage increases and you added that $5, did you say border review?
Yeah. Everybody in that bottom section. You just had to change your budget.
Okay. We need to make sure, because I did not hear border review.
Yeah. All of them that were in the bottom.
He did say.
And I'll get your copies of that.
Treasurer's office, township building, cemetery.
Wait a minute, on cemetery. On cemetery, we lowered the expense of foundation to $1,600.
What's it at now? Oh, now it's at 24?
Yeah, we're lowering it to $1,600.
Okay.
Accommodates what we would bring in as revenue.
Sure.
Okay. Is that it on cemetery? Let's do unallocated.
Because of those changes, they were offset in contingency, turned to $415,164.
You got this one?
Your miscellaneous squaw lake turned to $14,125. So basically, that was our wash, our cleanup from those other changes. That's the only changes were made.
What does the 430 go to?
The what?
Where does that 430 go to?
415.
415?
164 is contingents?
No, no, the, yeah, contingency. Where does that go to now? You said it was...
Oh, it goes to $415,164.
Okay, that's a contingency.
And then therefore, your miscellaneous squaw, which is 962.021, is $14,125.
Oh, we missed that.
Because I think I had it at zero.
It happens.
Onto highway maintenance.
We are going to, we discussed it, Supervisor Dunn and I discussed it, and that, and that we'll be using the telecommunications funds towards the, um...
Chloride.
Chloride.
It's coded as such, Dana, when you get the bill.
I will.
Streetlights, social services, planning commission.
Oh, hers is blow by the safety path. Travel 450,000 to safety path fund.
Let's move on. Postage, MESC, medical insurance, life insurance.
I don't think that is a no.
Insurance bonds, pension plan employer, social security, and gineering fees.
And just so you know, the projected 2018, because I missed a $300,000 allocation you guys did of moving month funds, we're looking at the end of 2018, $1,269,187. Of course, that could actually go up, but...
Well, that could, because we have an asset we might be looking at selling.
Ah. And I don't know, unless you have any other comments, I made no changes on any of the other budgets.
That is true. Cemetery maintenance. Looking for my road. You got the road out there. Let's move on to the road fund, the revenue portion of the road fund. Any questions? How about the expense portion? Okay, we'll move on.
Police contracting.
Uh, the police contracting fund, revenue. Questions? Complaints?
Nope, still looking good.
Okay, how about on the police contracting, uh, expense?
Hmm, it's looking good.
We did check today, and, uh, with what we expect, the policing to go up, and it's gonna average 3% over the next three years, or the next contract. It's gonna be, it's front-end loaded, it's like 4.2, and then 2. something, but over a three-year period, it averages out to about 3, so.
That's at a high point.
It looks like, though, contingency is like 639 going into 19. You looking at adding another staffer?
No.
No?
No, because we have to roll that, and for the rollback, had the rollback, so we have to have money into the savings in order to maintain the service to the end of the mill.
Okay.
So that's why the money's there. That was our full intention.
Okay, cemetery.
Okay, cemetery maintenance. Questions on the, uh, revenue portion?
That's fine.
Expense portion? Telecommunication fund. Uh, we're gonna be using that fund for road chloride. Any questions on the revenue? Moving on. Uh, safety path fund.
Oh, you got building permit. But that was changed. You don't have two, two.
Oh, okay.
Second's building permit.
Building permit fund. Questions on the revenue? Questions, or, excuse me, yeah, on the revenue? How about on the expense? Moving forward. Telecommunications.
Oh, safety path.
Safety path. I keep going over that, Joe.
I see the $50,000 didn't come over from general fund?
Nope.
Did I miss that?
You missed it.
Okay.
We still have time.
We still...
The night's still young.
Yeah, we're 28th.
Okay.
But it would just be the time to bring up, uh...
The safety path allocation?
Not the safety path, but, you know, when contractors are asked to...
Cash in lieu of.
Cash in lieu of. I want, I, we talked today, we'd like that earmarked for safety paths, not maintaining safety paths.
That's what it is. Well, the thing that comes out of that fund is anything associated with new pathways, like GM's fees for Seymour Lake Road, Aizman acquisition, anything maintenance wise is all general fund.
Okay, we're sure of that.
Oh, we're sure of that. Trust me, we're sure of that.
Yes.
So the question to the board is, do you want it used for actual safety paths, or do you...
Brick and mortar? Do you want brick and mortar, or?
Anything to construct the path, including the path.
Oh, yeah. No, I have no problem with that. I'll take the rest out of general fund.
Trustee Curtis?
So I get my $50,000.
Well, once, maybe you might get it.
Ask the question again. Is it pay in lieu of?
Yes.
Pay in lieu of is to go towards design, build, and construction of a safety path. If they don't put the path in, according to the ordinance, if you don't put the path in, you put the money in the safety path for the development of future safety paths.
I will rely on the safety path committee to look into this and get back with us.
Why, why do we allow so much, so pay in lieu of instead of putting it...
Because you have places where we're never going to have a safety path.
Okay.
We don't allow a lot of them.
Okay.
There, there has, there's been maybe three in, in the last eight years.
What's the one down on Stanton and Baldwin? That's a good one there.
Savannah Ridge.
Savannah Ridge.
Yeah.
They had to put it there, but we're never gonna have a safety path out there. So they're, they paid for it, it goes the safety path, we just wanna make sure it's going for brick and mortar.
Makes sense.
Uh, safety path, we through that?
Yeah.
Building in sight.
You think it's possible, guys, if this is getting low now, maybe fold this back into general fund?
I don't wanna do that until I know that, or we don't wanna do that until I know that Park and Rec's gotten all their fees. That's, that's why it's there. Park and Rec has money there, that's theirs.
Okay.
That's why we had to move the money there, because when the motion was made, yes, yes, and that's why we had to move the money in there for that generator, is because you took into consideration, not realizing that that money's sitting there, and the fund balance technically wasn't township money, it was Buds Hall money to Park and Rec. So we can figure out how much is left, and, uh, clerk Wright has a spreadsheet. We can figure out how much is left that goes to Park and Rec and do something about that.
Then as that fades out, we can fade this coming out?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I believe that's it for the funds. We'll finalize that, I believe, sometime later.
28?
Twenty, 28? Well, now it's on a Friday, that's...
Friday night, 7 o'clock.
Keeps changing. It's on the 28th.
7 o'clock.
At 7 o'clock, which is a Friday.
8.
We didn't have a quorum on the 26th. Takes it tight for you, doesn't it?
Probably be redone in the end.
Should just be, should be easy, he's on motions already.
Okay, let's go on to the walkability study. Treasurer Ferrari.
Okay, board members, you got the email from me, excuse me, the memo from me detailing the bids we received, and my recommendation to Spalding D. Decker, because of the low price. And I did call them, I talked to Taylor a couple days ago, I said, "Do you know the work that's involved in it?" And she said, "Yes." I said, "I don't expect to get anything over this, these charges." She said, "No, they've had experience in Orion, and they feel they can do the whole project for $99.50." Listen fine.
Any other questions?
I move to award the walking biking safety path audit along M24 Lapeer Road, from Indian Lake Road to Harriet Street, to Spalding D. Decker, amount of $9,095. Any additional charges must be pre-approved by project coordinator, township treasurer, Joseph G. Ferrari, before proceeding.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hmm, roll call.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
And trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Next one, the lot split committee. I'll move the Oxford Township Lot Split Committee is dissolved immediately. Any further applications for lot split be forwarded to the planner for the Charter Township of Oxford for consideration of approval or denial.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I was enjoying my time on that committee.
Yeah, we had fun with that one, we did, didn't we? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 2020 census, clerk Wright?
Yes, as we've discussed previously, the 2020 census is upon us, and we talked with a representative from the Census Bureau, Linda Clark, and she forwarded to you a booklet that's in your packet, 2020 Census Community Partnership and Engagement Program. And as part of that program, there's a section in here that allows the community to create what's called a complete count committee. And what that does is allows the community members to get involved, to get more people counted in within the township. And as you see on the screen here, it starts with the highest elected official, which would be Supervisor Dunn, and he would elect a chairperson or liaison, that could be himself or whomever.
Oh, I'll make, I'll make sure that...
Like to have. And then from there, it's a matter of getting other, other civic leaders, media people involved to get the word out to people that need to be counted in the community, such as people that are just registered by P.O. boxes.
P.O. boxes, no, no place to send, they need an address to be able to send the questionnaire to it. And the people at post office boxes, they need to be counted.
Mm-hmm.
Them and their families.
And what this does is it creates more revenue to the township for, for the future, so it's for everybody's benefit.
Is it $100 a person, or 80?
It's roughly about $80 right now, but I'm sure it will, will, it's higher.
Change.
It's dependent on the sales tax formula that's remitted back to the communities for, for that, so, so, I guess if there's any questions on, how you want to proceed, if you want to proceed, it's an optional program, but it looks like it's for the benefit of Oxford and residents.
What's the board's comment?
I think it's a good idea. I think we should go for it, because the more of our community leaders that we have involved, the more the word gets out to everyone. I, I just think that it's a...
So are you volunteering for the chairperson?
We just gotta volunteer.
No. I just, I might edge that anywhere out here. I just say trustee.
Let you volunteer to be chairperson.
No, 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 no.
Hey, Jack, you've been going to the, uh, committee leaders?
Yes.
Would you like to, uh, handle this?
You know, under commissioner's comments, I also have something about community leaders.
And I'll be more than happy to help you.
Yeah, because they are now meeting twice a month, because it's a new committee, and one of them is this, the other is the M24 construction, about what they're gonna do for businesses and things like that. I'll work on a committee, yeah.
I move that the Charter Township of Oxford form a complete count committee to assist in the 2020 census. Appoint trustee Jack Curtis as the representative to serve on the complete count committee.
Support.
We gotta like...
Uh, I will vote for it as long as Joe Ferrari is the alternate.
You said you're gonna help him.
I'm gonna, I'm a supervisor, I supervise. So would you amend your motion to include Joe Ferrari as the...
Well, then I feel bad, because you really wanted to do it.
Don't feel bad.
Let's go back to that chart.
I'll amend my motion to have, uh, trustee Curtis as the representative, and treasurer Ferrari as the alternate.
I'll amend my support.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'll be glad to help you guys.
Yeah, I'm sure you would be. Just like you were before.
I will supervise.
Button your shirt, your heart's falling out.
Uh, onto the good part. Certification of the primary election. Clerk Wright, stand up, take a bow.
I'm moving, that's the people that support me. I move to approve the canvas of votes for the August 7, 2018 primary election for the Charter Township of Oxford as presented, and include them as an attachment to the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and while we're doing this, I'd like to again thank the clerks department, all the volunteers, all the paid people that made the election go smooth. Uh, I'm talking about everybody that was involved in that election. So, it always seems to run smooth under our clerk, and him and his people are to be commended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. Board of trustee comment, starting with Elgin.
I guess I would just rezone what you just said, you know, about the elections committee, and particularly, Mr. Curtis Wright led the charge.
Good job.
Yeah, good job.
Daddy?
Nothing.
Curtis?
Uh, to lead into that, the last day to register to vote for the November 6 election is October 9, and there's going to be a blood drive on October 10 at the Parks and Rec Community Center from 1 to 7. That is our next board meeting date, by the way. And that's pretty much all I have.
I'm going to pass right now to Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Margie?
I have two. One, I started to mention the community leaders meeting, it's now meeting twice a month. Uh, they put up a whiteboard in the community room in the village to address the M24 rebuild. Topics include traffic management, business access, special events, alternative transportation, those kind of things. It's a working committee to, um, get ready for this major construction that's gonna go on. They're talking about moving all the southbound, uh, into the southbound lane and having northbound coming up Glassby, and we're just getting involved and looking at this plan, and it is monstrous. Temporary traffic lights and things like that are gonna be happening in the village, and it will affect the businesses in the township, those that don't have ingress egress from the northbound lane while they're working on it.
And I've got one comment on the... And I've got one comment on the businesses down there. They don't seem to be taking, uh, an active role right now. I, you know, they're probably worried about making their payments on their, their rent and all that, but they've gotta get involved. We don't want them sitting back there in twenty-twenty going, "What the hell just happened here? And nobody told me and..."
I went to the, uh, the state, sent out a presenter that gave, uh, some information on what to do when your town is so adversely affected, and we had one business person in the meeting, and there were three people from government, one person in it, and this was specifically for the business...
The business people. So they've gotta take an active role or...
Bill, you're mirroring my comments exactly. We go to these meetings and, um, we're talking about taking two lanes of traffic and eliminating it into side streets, and how do they access these businesses? They're more worried about paying their rent than they are about what's gonna come up in a year and a half, and, and it's coming up faster than we think it is. And M.D.O. makes the decisions for you. If you don't make a...
You don't make it, they'll make it.
Right. So, I mean, I'm going to two meetings a month, um, on my own. I'd suggest any other trustee, treasurer, clerk, supervisor, go to these and see if there isn't any input that could, uh, be held in there.
Jack, do they have a busy schedule?
Yeah, it's like every other Thursday morning at seven o'clock.
Send me that when you get that.
Okay.
Jack, I'd like to just say one thing. I was part of that a few years ago when they, when they brought it up.
It was a...
They did nothing.
Right.
Nothing for five years, so I was tired of going to it.
Yeah.
Uh, but once, you know, and I said I'll go back once they're, they started doing something, uh, rather than sit back and drinking coffee and patting each other on the back.
Right.
Uh, so I will be more than happy to jump back in there.
We've identified thirty-some critical issues that is going to affect the township and the village that are gonna need addressing. Similar things like, you know, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna vote to close, allow work through the night in the township, in the, in the village. Well, how do people get in and out of the, you're even, we're even brainstorming things like using Noda to park at Meyer or somewhere else to bring people into town, because it's gonna be a mess.
Any other, any other comment?
Yeah, the, the last one I had was, there was a proclamation from Oakland Community Health Network in our packet tonight. Were we supposed to do something with that, or was that just...
I took it as information.
Just information.
It's information. It's approved as part of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Versus a regular agenda item.
That's all I had.
Elgin had it.
Good answer. Consent agenda.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You didn't have anything to say? You reserved your comments.
I just followed your lead. Do-over.
I was just gonna say that, uh, I served on the M. Twenty-four Task Force for quite a while, for the last two years. Uh, DDA actually sent out questionnaires to all the businesses trying to get feedback. Of all the ones that were sent out, there was a good twenty-five, thirty percent that never returned them. Uh, so it's an issue. Uh, it was actually broken down into several groups where we became block captains or, where we went out and actually talked to X number of businesses. I had a section down on the south end of town that I talked to every business person there, making them aware of what was coming in the year two thousand and twenty, that they better get ready. And, uh, I know all those things that Jack is talking about, that they are coming, and, uh, I think the more, the better involved that we get in for this thing, especially people our experience with construction, with road changes as they're gonna have, will be a big benefit. There are people, though, that are business people that do understand this, and they're visibly shook over, to say the least. That's all I have to say.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I made that.
Second.